Okay, I apologize for the delay. There's religious holidays that affect four of our members, so that's part of the reason. But we now have a quorum, so here is my thing. So in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township Franklin has been provided. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so as you stated, we have Councilman Barson, Sammy Siobhan, Mustafa Mansray, and Mahir Rafiq all asked to be excused due to the holiday, and Ted Chase is away on holiday across the sea. So Erica Inosensio. I wrote it down here. Oh, there you are. Okay. Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Charles Brown.
Here, and apologies, makes military know better when I got caught up. Apologies.
Robert Thomas.
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Here.
Chairman Arcini.
Here.
Erica, I just need you on record, so when you get seated, if you could just say you're here. Thank you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Sorry about that, but she can't hear you coming that way.
Okay, so we have no minutes tonight, we have no discussion items. You have one resolution. And so this is related to our Planning Board attorney. So the current gentleman to my left representing our normal firm has a conflict with the B-9 Schoolhouse Warehouse. The zoning board attorney who is filling in, because of that situation, and that Peter and Jim Clarkin would have to recuse themselves, is taking an extended leave from his firm, so he is not available. So the biography that the board has before them tonight for Eric Martin Bernstein, he is the Planning Board attorney in Hillsborough, he has been very familiar with warehouse issues. They're facing many of the same challenges that we are for warehouses. I have looked at his CV, and he seems eminently qualified and has 40 years of experience. And so for that reason, we would like to appoint him as special counsel, not replacing Peter or Jim, because they're irreplaceable, but to be able to pinch-hit for the conflict that they find themselves with regarding B-9 Warehouse. So with that, I'd like to move appointment of Eric Bernstein as special counsel for B-9.
I'd second that.
Erica Inosensio.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Yes.
Mike Arcini.
Yes. Okay, so we had a little switch in the agenda from what you might have found online in the preliminary agenda. We're going to put Summerfields first, because it should be fairly quick, and then we'll get to IDIL Davidson. So just so you know that. At this time, we'll open the meeting up to general public comment on any planning issue that's not the subject of these two hearings tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is now open to the public for general planning comment.
Hello, Kiki Anastasakis, 3204 Anclave Circle in Canal Walk, and a member of the beloved Citizens Warehouse Action Group. For full disclosure, I would like to share my thoughts and comments with the esteemed members of this planning board regarding the township's master plan. This is, these are a couple of points. I'm going to refer to one of the goals of the land use plan element in the 2016 revised master plan, and also I'm going to refer to the Environmental Resource Inventory section of the master plan. So, and they both relate to warehouses and, you know, kind of like walking the fine line between economic development and quality of life and maintaining the character of the township. So in the goal of the land use element, under the goals of the land use plan element of the master plan, the following statements are embedded in the document. Quote, "To encourage commercial and industrial development in area with access to major highways such as Interstate 287." Further down in the text, quote, "To locate major employment and traffic drawing uses in areas where they will least impact residential neighborhoods." So I'm reading this, and I'm saying, well, what have we, the residents of Canal Walk, done wrong? Because certainly we are a residential neighborhood, there are at least four other, three other senior citizen residential neighborhoods in the area, and yet we seem like magnets to be drawing major employers who will generate undoubtedly quite a bit of traffic, and they will have a major impact, not the least impact, but a major impact. So that's one question that I have, which perhaps you can help me understand better. Another interesting, before I get to the Environmental Resource Inventory section, I want to share a very interesting statistic that was mentioned in the master plan, which I was not aware of. And so this has to do with people in my age group, as I call it, those who are 65 and above, and also the group 55 to 64. This is the section of the master plan where they are talking about population increase, decrease, in, I guess based on the census, but it's specifically for the township of Franklin. And so for the 2000 to 2010, that 10-year period, I guess those were the latest, I would like to know what the numbers are for 2010 to 2020, and I don't know if Mr. Healy or anybody else has that information, but what's interesting is that from 2000 to 2010, this 65-plus age group increased 47 percent, the highest increase of all other age groups. So from 5,865-plus residents, by 2010 Franklin Township had nearly 9,000, 8,500 senior citizens. And I'm wondering, so where do these people live? Well, they live in these retirement communities that are supposed, you know, to be the least affected, because they are residential neighborhoods. I cannot reconcile the two, and I'm sure that is a major conundrum for the members of this planning board and the council and the township. How to reconcile economic development and job creation with quality of life of people, especially people with compromised immune systems and so forth. Not an easy task at all. In the Environmental Resource Inventory section of the master plan, the first goal is to, quote, "Conserve open space, rural character, scenic vistas, sensitive environmental areas, and farmland." Furthermore, there is a recommendation in the master plan that the planning board, quote, "Maintain design and siting standards to protect the township's historic and rural character, particularly in villages and along scenic corridors." And again, I'm asking, how did we get to this point? How did we get to the point where scenic corridors are being industrialized, where pristine land five minutes from Colonial Park, and right up the street from land that the county has bought and has declared open space is considered for such a structure for a warehouse next to a residential senior community, which is not supposed to be, to have a major impact? If you have any answers to these questions, please share them with me. I just hope that we're not losing sight as a township, as a community, we're not losing sight of the master plan. I went back to it, because it's like kind of the Constitution, you know, you go back to remind yourself, whoa, what exactly is the 13th Amendment, what exactly, what exactly does the 14th Amendment says, you know? And then sometimes we wonder with the Constitution, how have we gotten so far off the track? So how are we getting so, so far off what the goals of the, of the master plan are, with all due respect? And I just hope that it is not because warehouse developers are paying astronomical prices. And of course, that's a tremendous draw, and, and, and very, very appealing, but I do hope, and I respectfully would like to request, that this planning board does everything in its power to remain true to the rural design and the scenic corridor standards that are embedded in the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming forward, I move to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Jan Brandt, 22 Bryant Court. I'm wondering if you could ask, answer the question, because there's so many millions of square feet of warehouse being built since 2018, 5.5 to be exact, but is there a program that the people who want to develop the warehouses are given or enticed in order to come over? I know I've heard of pilot programs and things like that, and I'm just wondering if that has anything to do with it. No?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Seeing no other people coming forward, I move to close the public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, public session is closed. In our first hearing, Summerfields of Franklin, PLN 2300003. Peter, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I can honestly say that this is the first time in 50 years that I've gotten a report that consists of one page that says it has no comments or objections regarding the request. However, I will take a few minutes just to explain to the board while, what we are doing, and I will do that by calling, let me go back. Originally, this project was approved in 2015, and at that time, and Mr. Reynolds will go over it, part of the project had a design feature at the corner consisting of certain structures. In order to construct those structures, this board granted variances to the applicant. As time went on, the applicant finally built the center, was back here in 2018 for some amendments when the Lightbridge Academy came in. The applicant felt that because of the way the building looks, which is very, very nice, and with the signage for the tenants, that the structure at the corner would detract or take away from the building, and therefore he's looking to eliminate that and replace it with landscaping. I would call Mr. Reynolds to be sworn in, and we will review what was approved and what we are proposing.
If you could raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Jeffrey D. Reynolds, R E Y N O L D S, 18 Cider Mill Circle, Flemington, New Jersey.
Mr. Reynolds, you are a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you're employed by and principal in the Reynolds Group?
Yes, that's true.
And you prepared the plans that are the subject of this application?
Yes, I did.
And your office also prepared the plans that were approved by this board in 2015, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I would offer the testimony of Mr. Reynolds.
It's accepted, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Reynolds, can you please show the board what was approved in 2015?
Can I share my screen up there? I'm not sure how.
Chairman, are you comfortable proceeding with just the two screens showing everything?
Yeah, it's fine, I mean, as long as we have the same plans.
It's in your package, that's correct.
And nothing's colorized or different.
Yeah, this is part of the plan set. Yeah.
Well, this was the original approved plan right here, and you can see it was the rustic structure that they were going to put up, a rustic millhouse structure, and it had a sign, and it had a lot of landscaping around it also. I'm going to show you another. Yes.
Sure. Okay, I hear myself now. And this is a sketch of the Summerfields retail millhouse feature as it was submitted to the planning board. This is what was proposed to be done, but our client decided not to, because you can see, it kind of blocks the whole corner of the intersection.
And when this feature was approved, did it in fact require variances from the board because it encroached in the setbacks of both Randolph and Schoolhouse?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, and the proposal is not to construct this, and what are we proposing to do in lieu of that?
We are proposing to add landscaping.
And can you bring that up, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay, and can you describe the landscape plan that you're proposing?
Yes, I can. We have three columnar maple trees in the rear, we've got two plum trees flanking on both sides, I've got some holly trees on both sides of the sign, we've got some cat mint in the front, some heavenly bamboo underneath the sign, and we've got some junipers around the plum trees with some perennial joie pi weed flowers in the background, and also some tall grasses.
Okay, and I indicated initially that there was a concern, and you indicated that the structure that we propose would block the view of the shops that are in the shopping center. Will, what is the growth perspective of these trees, and will they block the ability to see the tenants?
The growth of these trees, as shown, is probably about two-thirds to three-quarter mature size. It would get a little bit bigger than what you're seeing now, but it would obviously leave some gaps where you can see between the trees to see the retail center.
Okay, and if the board were to approve this amendment to the plan, we would have to not only put the landscaping in, but also post a performance bond to make sure, or maintenance bond, to make sure that it does in fact grow and mature as it's supposed, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and part, the other part of the proposal is a sign, and that would be, that sign there?
That's the sign.
Mr. Lanford, can I jump in one sec? Colorized rendering, was that submitted with the packet, or are we going to mark that A1?
That we should mark, because I think we just submitted a black and white.
Yeah, I was going to say. And say same thing for the sign will be A2? But they had a color.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thanks.
All right, and can you just describe the sign, please?
The sign, basically a four-by-eight sign, approximately four foot high at the bottom of the sign, eight foot to the top. It's very ornate, it's not a standard sign. As you can see, the sign that we had originally put in there was pretty plain. This sign really will fill that gap and make it look a lot better on the corner there with that landscaping.
Okay, and will there be illumination for that sign?
There will be illumination for the sign.
And that will be ground mounted illumination that will shine up on the sign?
Yes, there will be two lights mounted at the front of the sign, ground mounted, shining up.
Okay, and for the record, there is one other sign for the shopping center, which is a pylon sign further down on Schoolhouse, which identifies the tenants, so there's no need to do any tenant identification with this sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from the board?
One clarification, so on the one rendering, you have like a plain white sign, is what you're saying is it's not actually going to be that plain white sign, it's going to be this sign?
That's, that's right, Mark.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
I think the landscaping is nice, however, I think the original design protected the view of the parking lot, not so much the buildings themselves. So with that being said, I don't see it as an improvement, I actually see it as not being as nice as what you previously proposed with the project. Want to make that known.
With this landscape design, I actually get one more tree and 50 additional shrubs.
I just have a quick question about the species of bamboo. Is this one of the invasive varieties?
No. This is called heavenly bamboo, it's a mounding variety, it mounds on top of itself, it does not spread, it doesn't have the rhizms.
Great, thank you. And the rest of the plants, I'm assuming are pollinator plants?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
No other questions from the board? I mean, personally, I'm agnostic to what's there. I, I don't think anybody's fooled into thinking that's a rural quarter anymore. In terms of the rustic thing, I like landscaping, the more the better. Sign is subtle and conforming. I mean, I have no, no, no problems. I mean, I think the TPC report kind of said it best, they seem agnostic, sort of, is the only comment I, I would have. Okay, if there's no other board questions, let's open this hearing to the public, so I make a motion that this hearing is open to the public for comment on this application.
Moved open to the public. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's open to the public for any comment. Seeing no takers, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, if someone could offer a motion, that would be great. No, I will. Okay. I'll move to approve this design change with the sign as shown in A2, rather than the one that was provided in the packet, and with the landscaping as shown and the performance bond to maintain it. It.
Second.
Then we have a second.
Yep.
I don't know, you guys can find it out, who did it first?
I'll show deference.
We'll give it to Bob. We'll give it to Bob.
I'll give it to Bob, show deference, yes.
Okay. Erica Inosensio.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas. I think your mic is on.
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Yes.
And Mike Arcini.
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too, Peter. A rare easy one from your shop. Like it. So our, our next hearing, as we, as we transition here, is IDIL Davidson, IDIL Davidson LLC, You can go ahead and start, let's get the show on the road.
Good, good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Constratore with the law firm of Price, Mees, Showman, and Arminio, representing the applicant IDIL Davidson LLC. This application is in connection with the property at 195-215 Davidson Avenue. It's the site currently of a long vacant, somewhat dilapidated old hotel building, along with a smaller industrial manufacturing-type building. This application proposes the demolition of all of those structures and construction of a new 201,610-foot, square-foot warehouse. This application is for preliminary and final site plan approval, along with conditional use approval, and a single variance, and I'll get into variances in a minute, a single variance for the length of the loading berth. In terms of the application, this is under the conditional use ordinance that was adopted in, in the summer, that had two standards for it, and you'll hear this, but I think it's helpful just to get a full overview of the application. The standards for that were, one, that the site is serviced by public water and sewer, which of course it is, and secondly, that the nearest residentially zoned property needs to be no closer than 500 feet on the same side of 287. This property is approximately 3,000 feet from, from any of them. Essentially, it's, it's surrounded by commercial industrial, it's right up against 287, and really fits essentially with, with the site as one amenable to this redevelopment. In terms of variances, I want to go through that a little bit. When the application was first filed, it requested an impervious coverage variance. As part of the review and the board professional reports, the applicant evaluated that in light of the, the board's comments and the town's preferences, and the application reduced the impervious coverage and reduced the parking sufficient to make the development comply with the impervious coverage maximum limit. Beyond that, the fire official for Franklin requested the construction of a 24-foot wide paved accessway in the rear of the site, which obviously that would have been non, would have been impervious, non-pervious, excuse me, would have been grass area. So that increased the impervious area as it relates to, to that, but actually, the applicant further reduced the impervious and parking so that you have before you an application. Also, your, your board engineer, in his raising of this item, noted that if the applicant can show on the record a truck-turning template or things like that, that the truck maneuvers safely, that he was in favor of the variance being granted. So you will see that. So essentially, you have practically a conforming application with the extent of that, what I'll call minor variance, which is pretty common. On top of that, there also will be, there was a request for granting of an easement. There is a water line that's currently on the property, at least a portion of it, which there is no easement for, for maintenance or upkeep or anything in favor of the municipality. The applicant's representatives have been speaking with your economic development director and other representatives, and have worked out the details of that easement. So as part of this application, we will be supplying that easement for the area that is on the site. As, as a note, the, we know, everyone, including Franklin, knows that it's a certain point of the property that is burdened with this water line, but we don't know exactly where it is for the full length. So we will actually be doing physical work in the field to physically identify where that water line is and grant the easement for, for the extent of it. So essentially, you have really a, almost a conforming application to the maximum extent possible, doing all of the requests. And as a last item, I would note that the project engineer, Alex Lomay, has met with your fire official, your board engineer, and your economic development director went through that, and we will be addressing and satisfying all the comments in the engineer's report, as well as the fire official. There's a couple of items in the engineer's report that need their further coordination, but it will ultimately result in compliance during resolution compliance. So we really have an application, we think, is, is one that is conforming practically. And we, you know, unless there's any other questions, I can get started with my first witness.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks for that intro.
And I'd call Justin Burns.
Perfect. Do you swear, raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your business address for the record.
Justin Burns, 90 Castle Howard Court in Princeton, New Jersey. Oh, I'm sorry, Burns, B-U-R-N-S.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, can you just generally provide the board with your position, your experience, your familiarity with this, this site plan and the property?
Sure. So I'm the Northeast Market Officer for IDI Logistics. I'm basically responsible for all of our new and existing projects within the region.
Okay. And in terms of IDI Logistics, for, for people who are not aware, maybe some background on the company?
Yeah, so IDI Logistics has been around for approximately 34 years. We've developed about 187 million square feet of industrial real estate across the country for approximately 700 customers. In New Jersey specifically, we have approximately 4 million square feet in our existing portfolio. And just for some context, for one of our recent projects, our most recent project was in Passaic, New Jersey. It was a 111,000-square-foot industrial development. I would say very similar to the subject site. It was a redevelopment of a dilapidated, you know, vacant, existing structure, and we were able to develop that into a best-in-class warehouse, and really, from our perspective, an asset for the township, the community, and certainly for, for IDI. We developed that warehouse on a speculative basis, and we were fortunate to subsequently lease it to a Fortune 50 home improvement company.
Great. And in terms of, let's bring it to this site. So obviously, you look at a lot of different properties. What, what are some of the attributes of this site? Obviously, the board's familiar with it, so we don't need to belabor them, but what are some of the things that make this the appropriate site for redevelopment and for the warehouse?
Sure. Yeah, so I think probably arguably most important, I mean, is the proximity to a major interstate highway system. So all of the developments that we're, we're really working on have proximity to a major highway. Secondly, again, kind of the redevelopment nature of the site, the fact that it's a vacant hotel, a Class C warehouse, I mean, being able to ameliorate the site, create something new, and again, create an asset, was something that really attracted us to, to the location. In addition to that, again, the neighborhood, you know, we're, we're surrounded by commercial uses, and we feel like our development will really fit the neighborhood. And then I would say, lastly, and, and again, it's obviously a very, it's a huge sticking point, certainly in New Jersey and nationally today, the proximity to residential, or really the lack thereof, you know, being over half a mile from the nearest residential on the same side of 287. I mean, every project that, I mean, quite frankly, we're evaluating in the state, it needs to be a significant distance away from residential.
Okay. Thank you. And in terms of, just for the record, can you confirm what you're actually proposing to build in terms of size of the building?
Yeah, so we're, we're building a approximately 202,000-square-foot warehouse distribution building.
But it, it is specifically 201?
201, 610, yes.
Yes, okay. We like to be specific.
Yes, yes, sorry. Apologies, apologies.
That's okay. In terms of prospective tenants, or do you view this as a single-tenant building? How, how do you market that? What are your expectations?
Yeah, our preference is certainly to, to lease this up to a single tenant, and that's really how we anticipate the leasing playing out. It is designed to accommodate two tenants, so our expectation is it, it could go to two tenants, but really, you know, again, our preference and expectation is it'll be a single-tenant building.
Okay. In my introduction, I mentioned variances and the changes to the application to address the concerns of the municipality and the board. For the record, can you just confirm that the impervious coverage variance that had previously been requested is withdrawn and that the project will comply?
That's correct. We reviewed the, the board professionals' comments and obviously took them very seriously and tried to address everything that we possibly could, and I can confirm that we have withdrawn the impervious coverage variance.
And, and just as, as the add-on, as you know, the fire official requested that 24-foot-wide access road in the rear of the site, which you have confirmed to construct. Again, just for the record, confirm that the satisfaction of the impervious coverage standard includes construction of that 24-foot lane requested by the fire official?
That, that's correct. Even with the 20-foot-four-wide fire lane, our site will be below the impervious coverage maximum.
In terms of the proposed monument sign, again, just to clarify, there was a question that will conform and will not require a variance from your perspective, correct?
Correct. That will conform, and there will be no variance required.
Okay. Similar to, there was a question raised in the engineer's report about a, the height, maximum height of a vertical dimension of a, of tenant signs. Just confirm for the record that, again, that will be complying?
Confirmed. It will comply.
Okay. In terms of the sole bulk variance that still applies, it is for the load, the length of the loading dock. I, I mentioned it, and I'll say it now for the record. It's supposed, it's required by ordinance to be 147 feet. You're proposing 130 feet, which relates to double the size of the typical tractor-trailer we see driving around the site. If you, from your perspective, you know, as a layperson, we'll have Alex Lomay discuss it from an engineering perspective, but from your perspective, what's your view of that 130-foot standard?
Yeah, 130 feet is, it's an industry standard. We have a 60 million-square-foot national portfolio, and I'd say the majority of our buildings have 130-foot truck court.
So, so in your experience, it's used regularly, and, and there hasn't been any problems, certainly?
Absolutely. And, and I'd say nine of the 10 buildings that we have in New Jersey have 130-foot truck courts. And again, obviously, our, our job is to lease the buildings, obviously develop and then lease the buildings. So obviously, we need to have a marketable building for tenants, and you need to have a truck court that functions.
There was a, there was a question identified in the reports regarding the ordinance provision as to construction of sidewalks on Davidson. There are none now, and perhaps you can just go into that for the record, but please confirm your, the applicant's position on construction of that sidewalk.
So as, as you stated, there's currently no sidewalk along Davidson Avenue, so obviously, constructing a sidewalk will be a standalone sidewalk today, but we, we have agreed to construct the sidewalk along the Davidson Avenue frontage, and we will also install the sidewalk with connection into the site.
Also, there was a request for the water easement be granted in connection with an existing water line. If you can confirm consent to that for the record, and that will work out the details, certainly during resolution compliance, but that you are amenable to that, and I understand that there's been significant communications in terms of the details, and Mr. Lomay will go into that, but perhaps for the record, you can just confirm that case?
Yeah, confirmed. We will grant the easement. Obviously, as you previously mentioned, we're, we're working to, working with the township to locate the water line, and after we locate the water line, we will provide an easement.
Do you know whose water line it is? Is it New Jersey American, or?
It's the town's water line, apparently.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yep. Mr. Burns, will this building be solar-ready?
The building will be solar-ready. Every building that we develop in New Jersey has additional roof load to accommodate solar. So yes, and, and our plan would be to install solar, assuming there's capacity within the power grid, the plan would be to include solar.
And what about LEED certification?
Again, every building that we're developing in New Jersey has LEED certification. Our goal will be to achieve the, the highest LEED certification that we possibly can for the building, but at a bare minimum, we will have LEED certification.
Okay, great. I have no more questions for this witness.
I assume, so without getting too, too much into staff reports, but I think this is a good question for Justin, is just the EV charging stations. They'll be complied?
Yeah, just confirm for the record, and again, Mr. Lomay will, will discuss it, but you will be complying with the state law on EV charges?
Confirmed. Yep.
I'm going to ask you to generalize, but give us a typical profile of the average employee in your developments across New Jersey. I know this one is built to spec. You don't know who will be there, but you've referenced other buildings. So typical employee, how do they get to work?
Typical employee, how do they get to work? The, the tenant specifically within the building, or the employees?
Employees.
I'd, I'd say it varies dramatically based on the tenant within the building, to your point, and I'll try and be specific, but it, it obviously, it could be a car, certainly, and it could also be someone who's taking public transit, but it varies dramatically based on the tenant that is occupying the building, inclusive of, you know, how the bill, how the building's ultimately staffed.
I understand that it also varies, but distance away from where they work. Do you have any data on that?
So I, I don't have any specific data for you, but what I would say is a building of this size, generally speaking, it services the local community, and, and it's staffed locally as well.
Thanks.
And, and just, just to add to that, I think that, and, and just from my perspective, the, the willingness or the appropriateness of putting in the, in the sidewalk is, is not in part that there are buses and shuttles that are coming up and down Davidson, and right now, someone, it's on the other side of the street, someone has to walk across and is now on grass or in the road. So now, when they get to your frontage, they actually have a dedicated sidewalk to do that walking. Does that, I, I assume that played into your?
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no question, yep.
Any other questions for this witness right now?
Yeah. Could you speak at all to the concerns that the DNR Canal Commission laid out as of January? They did not approve, and any way that that's been addressed, their concern?
What I would suggest is that, that Mr. Lomay will, will directly address that, so I would say just hold that.
Okay.
And, and of course, Mr. Burns will still be here, so if he had something to add, but I think that your answer will be there, and I don't want to, I don't want to take away his, his.
And I'm assuming it's the same regarding where we are on the DEP permits regarding the wetlands?
Yeah. Part of what we'll be doing, what Mr. Lomay will be doing, will be listing the outside agency approvals and just giving you a very quick snapshot, yes. We're far along on all of them, though, and some we have.
Okay. Any other questions for this witness? If not, you can proceed to your next.
Okay, great. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
My next witness conveniently is sitting right next to me, and that's Alex Lomay of Boulder Engineering, who is the project and civil engineer.
Good evening.
You could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
My name is Alexander Lomay, last name L-O-M, as in Mary, E-I. Work with Boulder Engineering, located at 30 Independence Boulevard, Suite 200 in Moore, New Jersey.
Mr. Lomay, can you just briefly confirm your qualifications for the board to, to render expert testimony as, as a civil engineer, including your involvement in preparing this site plan?
Sure. I graduated with a Bachelor's in Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Delaware in 2010. Feels like a long time ago at this point. And then licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer since 2016.
And, and you're familiar, obviously, you've, you've been integral in preparing, and you have all the details of this application?
Yes. I was the senior project manager overseeing the design for the project and the application process in concert with, with Mr. Constratore.
Thank you. I would ask that he be qualified to render the?
He's accepted.
Thank you. Mr. Lomay, again, we don't need to be formal in this sense, so what I would suggest is provide the board in your way with an overview of all the items that we know that, that are important to the board to hear from an engineering point of view, and I can follow up with questions once you're done of anything I think we want to highlight or you may have forgotten.
Sure, sure. So if the board would indulge me, I have, I have a little bit of a checklist here or an outline for myself, so I will be going through the existing conditions. What you'll see upon the TV screens, I know for some of you, it's a little bit farther away, so if you need me to zoom in or pan or do anything with any of the exhibits you see on screen tonight, I can do that. I also do have handouts if the board would like. I have 11 by 17 handouts of any of the exhibits.
Right. I understand that it's, it is electronic solely, so like, we just say that for purposes of, of your, your preference if you need or want them.
Yeah, why don't we, since you're going to have exhibits, right, that, and then you maybe, if we have the handouts, then, and if they're colorized, then you won't have to mark them everything, because I'll have them.
We'll, we'll mark them anyway.
But yeah, if you want to, if you want to take a moment to distribute those to us, it'll be great.
Let me do that, yeah.
So you, you speak, and I'll, I'll hand out.
We can do two things at once. We're, we're, we've worked together before.
Excellent. So what you have on screen, and what Paul will be handing out to you, is the aerial exhibit, which is, was prepared by our office, dated April 19, 2023, which is tonight, and we can mark this as A1. We have north, north is oriented towards the top of the page. The site is identified on the tax map as Block 502.02, lots 37.01 and 38.01, also known as 195 to 215 Davidson Avenue. And the existing, for the existing conditions, just to provide a brief lay of the land, Davidson Avenue along the frontage to the southeast of the site, with industrial and office beyond. We have industrial and office to the northeast with I-287 beyond, office to the southwest, and we have office and a solar field to the, to the northwest. The site is approximately 13.04 acres. It's situated in the BI Business and Industry Zone, where warehouse use is conditionally permitted, or was conditionally permitted at the time of the filing of the application, which Paul had referenced in his intro. Just to go through the, the conditions for the use, they are as follows. A warehouse and distribution use shall be permitted only on a, on a lot located no closer than 500 feet to the nearest residentially-zoned property, except where an interstate highway is located between the BI Zone and such residentially-zoned property. We comply with this requirement. The nearest residentially-zoned property not separated by an interstate highway is approximately 3,000 feet away, and that is, I believe that's Block 468.02, Lot 22. The other condition for, for the warehouse use is a warehouse and, and distribution use shall be served, served by public water and sewer. We comply with this. The, the hotel in the previous industrial building was served by, by public water and sewer, and will, this use, the proposed warehouse use, will continue to be in the proposed. Currently on site, as Paul had mentioned, there's an existing vacant six-story hotel. is the aerial exhibit, which is, was prepared by our office, dated April 19th, 2023, which is tonight, and we can mark this as A1. We have north, north is oriented towards the top of the page. The site is identified on the tax map as Block 502.02, lots 37.01 and 38.01, also known as 195 to 215 Davidson Avenue. And the existing, for the existing conditions, just to provide a brief lay of the land, Davidson Avenue along the frontage to the southeast of the site with industrial and office beyond. We have industrial and office to the northeast with I-287 beyond, office to the southwest, and we have office and a solar field to the, to the northwest. The site is approximately 13.04 acres. It's situated in the BI Business and Industry Zone, where warehouse use is conditionally permitted, or was conditionally permitted at the time of the filing of the application, which Paul had referenced in his intro. Just to go through the, the conditions for the use, they are as follows. A warehouse and distribution use shall be permitted only on a, on a lot located no closer than 500 feet to the nearest residentially zoned property, except where an interstate highway is located between the BI zone and such residentially zoned property. We comply with this requirement. The nearest residentially zoned property not separated by an interstate highway is approximately 3,000 feet away, and that is, I believe that's Block 468.02, Lot 22. The other condition for, for the warehouse use is a warehouse and, and distribution use shall be served, served by public water and sewer. We comply with this. The, the hotel in the previous industrial building was served by, by public water and sewer, and will, this use, the proposed warehouse use will continue to be in the proposed. Currently on site, as Paul had mentioned, there's an existing vacant six-story hotel. I have plus or minus 285 rooms in the hotel, and a light industrial building of 23,628 square feet. That's across both lots. Also, in the existing condition, just from an access perspective, the hotel had two access points along Davidson Avenue, and the, the industrial building had one access point along Davidson Avenue. So, with that, I will move to the colorized version of the submitted site plan, and I emphasize the word submitted, because obviously, we've made some changes, which I will go through. I have a few exhibits here, just to try and outline everything for everybody. So this is a colorized version of, of our site plan, of our overall site layout plan. It's prepared by our office. The exhibit is dated April 19th, 2023. We can mark this as Exhibit A2. North is toward the top left of the page, and just, I will move on from this exhibit pretty quickly here, just because I would like to get into what we, what we're changing and presenting to the board tonight. But this is the plan that was originally submitted for the application. However, as Paul had mentioned, as, as Justin mentioned, we've reevaluated the plan relative to the impervious coverage variance, and some of the comments received by the township, and we have an alternate layout plan that I'd like to share tonight. So, yes. Yep, so the next exhibit, and I intend to flip back to this lightly during the landscape, when I go through some of the landscaping, because this really illustrates the landscaping very well. So the, the next exhibit, and again, a little tough to see on the screen, this is our alternate site layout redline plan, and the purpose of this exhibit is to show in black and white the initially submitted plan that was included with the application package, and again, I know on 11 by 17, it's very tough to see, so I can zoom in on the, on the TV screens if it helps for the board. In red is the changes we will make relative to the, to the fire lane, fire access lane, and some additional landscape islands that will be in the car parking area, all in an effort to reduce the impervious coverage. And we can mark this exhibit, if I didn't mention it already, as A3. So, the alternate, the alternate site layout redline plan, prepared by Bowler, dated April 19th, 2023. Similar orientation to the colorized site plan exhibit with north to the top left of the page. This plan does show some of the changes that we have committed to making, based on comments we received. Just some of the highlights is, we will be eliminating the 12 trailer parking spaces, which are toward the northwest of the site, and I'll zoom in a little bit on the screen. So the, the 12 trailer parking spaces in this area here, I'll outline with a blue pen if I can, to the northwest. Those will all go away in an effort to reduce the impervious coverage. No 12 trailer parking spaces in the proposed condition, and I will put a, a cleaner version of this up on the screen for everybody will have to hand that out, so it's a little bit easier to follow. I'm just, for the purposes of the redline, just in order to kind of show the board what we are changing. So, we will be losing the 12, we'll be removing the, the 12 trailer parking spaces in the, in the northwest corner. You'll see kind of a, a red box going vertically up and down the page here as well. That is to demonstrate the relocated fire access lane. That fire access lane will now be 24 feet in width, and in discussion with the, with the fire department, discussion that we had yesterday, they do want this fire lane to be shifted a little bit further to the west, or, or planned left on the page here, just to give a, a centerline distance from their fire access lane of 45 feet from the building. So it's not shown here, I didn't have time between yesterday afternoon and tonight to, to update this, but just for the board's benefit, that we did have the discussion with the fire department, and this access lane will shift to be a little bit further away from the building. And then, one of the last highlights would, is we are going to reduce the number of car parking spaces. We were initially proposing 134, we're now proposing 109 car parking spaces, and you'll see outlined in red, where some landscape islands, curb islands will be, will be put in for the car parking areas, and those areas will be planted out. Lawned area, no longer parking or pavement. And from, just to hit on the impervious coverage, the impervious coverage will be, with this redline plan, and what I'll show is the, kind of the black line version of this, will be 59.8% to comply with the 60% requirement in the Towns Code.
And that's inclusive of the fire lane?
Inclusive of the fire lane. Okay, so the next plan. Sorry about that. So the next exhibit, this is the alternative site layout plan, which essentially is a hardline version of the redline plan that I just presented. So for purposes of presentation for the majority of the rest of my direct testimony, I will leave this up on the screen, and you guys, and you know, the board can have a handout just to kind of, I think it's a little bit cleaner than the redline, it kind of shows what's really, what will actually be there as we work through any changes to the plans. So, as Paul had mentioned, as Justin had mentioned, the development proposes a 201,610 square foot warehouse with associated loading docks, driveways, car parking spaces, as well as stormwater and utility infrastructure. For, for parking, I had mentioned it earlier, we initially proposed 134 car parking spaces located to the south of the building. The alternate layout now proposes 109 car parking spaces. Both numbers, the 134 previously and the 109 car parking spaces now, are, are more than the, the required minimum of 84 car parking spaces outlined by the code. The parking will include six ADA accessible parking spaces. Two of the, two of those spaces will be van accessible, and we will have four EV parking spaces located along the east and west sides of the southern side of the building and the parking area. From an EV perspective, the state statute for 101 to 150 parking spaces requires four EV parking spaces, so we will, we are proposing the four, and we'll be installing that with the building. I had mentioned it again, but just for purposes of putting it on the record again, the, you guys, the board can see, the 12 truck parking spaces are no longer there. They were proposed originally, now there's zero truck parking spaces for the site. For, for the building for access, we're proposing a concrete sidewalk along the south side of the building to service the car parking spaces and provide access to the building. As Justin and Paul had mentioned earlier, we will be also proposing, it's not shown on this plan, I didn't add that in, but we will also be adding a concrete sidewalk along the frontage of Davidson Avenue, as well as adding a, a sidewalk that will get, get pedestrians from Davidson Avenue into the site and tie into the currently shown sidewalk along the south side of the building. And again, more sidewalk, more concrete, impervious coverage, we will maintain within the requirement of impervious coverage. So any, for some minor adds or modifications that we make to the site plans, through any sort of revision or potential resolution compliance, should the board be inclined to grant approval, we will always maintain that we will stay under the impervious coverage requirement, even if it's sacrificing an additional parking space to grow a curb island and add more landscaping, that's what we'll, we'll be doing there. ADA access, or ADA accessible routes are proposed from the ADA parking spaces to the entrance to the doors of the building, and I can confirm they will be ADA accessible from the parking spaces to, to the front doors of the offices for each, potential each two, of the two tenants, and we'll be updating a plan, we, again, we'll update the plan, and the, the access from the right-of-way into the building will be ADA accessible. From an access perspective for the site, it's proposed, we have two accesses proposed via two ingress and egress driveways on Davidson Avenue. The northerly driveway will be for truck access and, and for maneuverability inside the truck court, and the southerly driveway will be for car access to the car parking lot. I forget which report it was in, there was comments about signs for cars only and trucks only, though all that will be added. We will comply with those comments in the reports to properly sign and direct traffic to the, to proper area for the building. We're proposing two-way circulation around the north and south sides of the building for truck and car access respectively. As I had mentioned, we also have the emergency access lane around the rear of the building on the west side. I noted it earlier. We, we've spoken with the fire department, we, we will be shifting the location of this fire access lane to provide a 40-foot, 45-foot separation from the, the rear of the building to the centerline of the access lane, so it'll, it will vary a, a bit from what, what's shown on this alternate, alternative site layout plan exhibit. The truck dock, the truck court, the docks along the north side of the building total 130 feet in width, which Paul and Justin had mentioned. We are requesting the variance for the required width or depth of the truck berth from 147 feet, and we have a, we have a truck turning template on this alternate site layout plan, just for purposes of showing the maneuverability. And I will bring that up on the screen right now. The, the alternative site layout plan, I, I should mark as Exhibit A4 if I hadn't done that already. I'm, okay, excellent. Trying to remember at the beginning of the exhibits. So what you have on screen now is the alternative site layout plan with a WB67 truck. We can mark this as Exhibit A5, is prepared by Bowler, dated April 19th, April 19th, 2023. So, you know, for purposes of supporting the variance, and as noted in the, the engineer's comment letter, a 130 feet is pretty standard, industry standard for, for a warehouse building for a WB67 in the state of New Jersey. This plan demonstrates the truck can enter the site, it can maneuver in the truck court, it can access and back up into the, into the far truck docks, all the way to the east and all the way to the west side of the building, and then also exit the site, and we would submit this, as well as, they're all the exhibits to the town for the board engineer to review and, and provide any comment from an access perspective and, and support of the variance request for the, for the width of this truck court or the, the depth of the loading berths.
And just, just to clarify for the record on that, I know the, the board engineer isn't present currently, but you did speak with him and go over this with him, and I would just, you know, in his report, he states if the applicant demonstrates the site can accommodate WB67 vehicles, which is this truck turning template, that, that truck, yes?
Correct.
Vehicles, our office would take no exception to this variance. Obviously, he's not in the position to grant it, but I just, from your perspective, what you've just went through satisfies that requirement.
That is correct. I, I did review it with, with the board engineer, and I did note to him that we do, we do have a truck turning template that shows that the truck can maneuver in the truck court, and he said that's fine, just to have that submitted with the rest of the exhibits after the hearing.
It's variance that we're familiar with. We've, we've gotten it from another, a couple of other applicants, so.
Okay, good.
With much the same, you know, burden, burden of proof. And, and just a note to the staff reports, which you, you're doing a great job, kind of hitting the highlights, and so, exceptions only. I mean, we'll assume that you will comply with all the staff reports. If there's anything you can't comply with or wish to discuss, that's what you should have.
Exactly, yep, okay.
I do have, I will hit that at the end, 100%. I have a few, not that we won't comply with, just a couple items to talk through, but I will note that to the board in terms of exceptions of anything we won't comply with.
Perfect.
Safe assumption to make that we are complying with the comments and all the professional reports. So, another quick thing, just, just for purposes of demonstration, for the fire truck as well, the next exhibit would be the alternative site layout plan with a fire truck, just to demonstrate the maneuverability of the fire truck, also, again, prepared by Bowler, dated April 19th, 2023, and I believe we're marking this as A6? I think we are on 6, okay, great. It's hard to count and go through my outline. Excellent. So, pretty straightforward from the fire truck's access perspective, demonstrates that the Franklin Township Fire Truck can enter the site, utilize the emergency access lane around the, the rear of the building, and then exit site via the car parking on the south side of the building. Again, with the shift of the fire lane, it'll be, to be a bit further away from the building, moving at about 23 feet to the west, we've, we've run the, the truck internally, and we confirm that they can circulate even with the shift of the fire lane a little bit further away from the building. Okay, I'm gonna put Exhibit A2 back up on the screen, just for purposes of presentation. I can switch to something else if the board has a question we'd like to see. But just to quickly hit on, hit on signs, so we are proposing one monument sign for the site near the southerly driveway. Sign will be less than 100 square feet, and that is inclusive of the measurement of the base of the sign. I know that was in the engineer's letter to make sure that we're accounting for the base of the sign as part of the square, allowable square footage for the sign. So the, the sign will comply with the, the 100-square-foot required area, be at or less than than that, and including the, the base of the sign and the measurement. We're also proposing two wall signs on the building, each of which, each of which will be less than 100 square feet, and have vertical dimensions of less than two feet in height, assuming multiple tenants. The Towns Code does allow for a four-foot height, a four-foot vertical height of the tenant's side if there is only one tenant. In either scenario, we will comply with the requirement for the signs. And, and I think the, the project architect will also have a colorized version of the building. You can see generally the location of the sign, but there will be a sign on the eastern facade facing Davidson Avenue in the southeast corner, I'll say, and another sign on the southerly facade in the southwest corner near the, the potential second tenant's office space. So generally, the signs will be in the location of the office spaces, just on different facades of the building to comply with one, one sign on each facade of the building. Just as a note, from an environmental perspective, there is an isolated wetland on site. It is in the southwest corner of the property. We do have an application in, to the NJDEP as we intend to fill in that wetland with some regrading, fire lane, bioretention basins, and things of that nature. So we do have the application into the DEP. They will do their stormwater review as part of that, as part of that permit review for, for a GP6 for filling in the isolated wetlands, and for the LO, for the letter of intent to identify the location of the wetlands. Just, since I'm talking about the DEP, that was submitted back in, at the end of December, around Christmas time. We've been talking with the DEP, they've had a minor comments here and there for some plan updates to show them certain things. We are close to getting a permit with the DEP. We do not have it, but we are, we're getting very close.
And obviously, the DEP for wetlands does not have a 90-day mandatory deadline for them as some other permits, so it's kind of keeping on top of them, but it seems like we have good indications that it should be forthcoming.
And, and just since we're hitting on outside agency reports, just to remind everyone that, you know, if we, when we act on this application tonight, for better or for worse, if, if, if the board were to grant approval, obviously, that's contingent upon getting all of your outside reports.
By operation of law, it is, yes. But I'm sure your attorney will mention it, but it is, it is always required.
Sometimes he does, sometimes.
Throw it out with a stellar recommendation from you tonight.
It's all downhill from there. Moving on, just to, just quickly discuss the drainage. Stormwater management proposed on site is designed in compliance with the, with the DEP's regulations, as well as the DRCC's regulations as well, which are slightly different, just with some of the new DEP regulations that have come out recently. So, stormwater that we are proposing is complying with the regulations of both agencies. We are proposing three bioretention basins on site, each with under drains as part of the green infrastructure measures required by the DEP and the DRCC. We have a bioretention basin along the frontage. We have a bioretention basin in the northwest corner of the property, as well as a third bioretention basin in the southwest corner. I know I've probably hit on it ad nauseam at this point, from a, but from a coverage perspective, our initial plan had proposed 8.05 acres of impervious coverage, which was 61.8% of the entire lot, with the alternate plan, which is not the plan you see on screen, but with the alternate plan, we are proposing 7.8 acres of impervious coverage, which is 59.8% of the entire lot. One other thing I think worth mentioning, from a, from a stormwater management perspective and from water quality, we are reducing motor vehicle surface area on site by 1.77 acres as well. Motor vehicle surface area is asphalt, anywhere your cars can park and travel, that can pick up like oil runoff and things like that, so that we are decreasing, just by the nature of the size of the building and the landscaping, the bioretention basins, we're decreasing motor vehicle surface area by, by about 1.77 acres. From a utility perspective, we'll have gas, electric, phone, cable, water, sanitary proposed for the building. Gas service connection will be out to Davidson Avenue. Electric, telephone, and cable will be tying in from utility pole in the southeast corner of the, of the property in the Davidson Avenue right-of-way, and then pulled to the site with a pad matching transformer, and then, and then serviced to the building. We've touched on it briefly, but from, for, for water, we will comply with the fire department's requirements, asking for a looped water line, asking for multiple connections back to Davidson Avenue. We do intend to, for the, the water line that is on site, roughly 10 feet off of the north property line, we will be making one connection there, coming into the site, looping the entire building, and then we will do another connection on the south side of the building, on the south side of the site through Davidson Avenue, through the driveway, and into Davidson Avenue. Talked about that with the fire department yesterday, and the engineer, satisfied from, from that perspective in terms of what we will be changing the plan to, to comply with that requirement. And then relative to the easement, as Paul had mentioned, as Justin has mentioned, we are, we're working with the town to basically dig test holes to exactly find the location of this water line, where, where does it end on the property? Does it make any sort of a turn, so that we can provide a proper easement to the town for the water line for future access, maintenance, et cetera. It was our understanding in talking with, with Vince Dominic, with Darren Mazzi at CME, and, and John House, the, the fire official, that we can have the, the pavement for the truck court and the curbing is allowable within the easement area. They did request that we don't have shrubs and plantings over the top of the water line from, you know, in, in the easement area. I do want to say that if, should we find that the water line turns and goes north, or goes in any other direction where we can put back some shrubs along the north property line, we would, we would be doing that. We just don't want to plant them over the water main as it is on site.
So, so just to clarify for the record, the municipalities made clear that they don't want the shrubs to be in, within the easement area itself, but to the extent, once we determine where it is, any area that's not within the easement would have the, the shrubs.
Correct, that's correct. From a sanitary perspective, the building would be tying into an existing 10-inch sanitary line at the rear of the site, and there's an existing connection. Now, we would be basically reconnecting for this building to the, the sanitary line at the rear of the site. From a landscape perspective, it's probably best to see it on this colorized version of the initially... submitted site plan. We have a, of a large combination of shade trees, ornamental trees, evergreen trees, deciduous and evergreen shrubs throughout the site. I think in total we have, not, not I think, in total, we have two hundred and seventy-two trees proposed on site and seven hundred and five shrubs proposed on site. Obviously, some of that will be tweaked and changed with some of the water line items and, um, you know, with re, with relocating this fire access lane around the rear of the building. You can see on the, the colorized version of the site plan that's up on screen that we do have some trees right at the rear of the building. We will be moving those to be, so that the, there's a clear path for, uh, a fire truck and the access lane to the rear of the building. And with, uh, you know, with removal of the, the trailer parking spaces, trailer parking spaces, we have some areas on site that we could also shift some of these trees from behind the building and put them, uh, in those areas as well, on top of some of the landscape islands that we're gonna be having in the car parking area. So some other areas that we can add some more trees and landscaping to the site. From a, from a lighting perspective, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, proposing lighting throughout the site that complies with the borough's requirements, combination of building mounted lights and area lights. Uh, any area lights that are near property lines will have a, a shield on them to prevent glare from spilling over onto the neighboring property lines.
LED?
LED, yes. And that concludes my direct testimony relative to the actual site information for the site plan, but just to go through some of the comment letters, uh, we received, I'll, I'll list out the comment letters and any exceptions, uh, that I think maybe a little color would be helpful for. So we have the, the review letter from CME Associates dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, speaking with Mr. Mazzi yesterday at CME. Uh, we intend to comply with the comments. As Paul had noted, there's a few stormwater, technical stormwater management items, uh, to be worked out with him, but we had a pretty good discussion yesterday and confident that we can work through those items as part of any potential resolution compliance plan revision should the board be inclined to grant approval. Uh, Franklin Department Planning, uh, Planning and Zoning Letter dated March second, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, we will comply with the comments. One specific thing to note is there was mention of, uh, adding bike racks. We will add bike racks. I, I, I don't have confirmed how many or the location, but we will add bike racks to satisfy the comment with the planner in their report.
And in terms of, unless you get to it, the, the other standard of, you know, in certain buildings that are larger, there's ride hailing and things like that. I assume the sidewalk and the connection to the bus shuttle addresses that, and, and there's really no need we would see for, for anything for?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, Franklin Township Fire, uh, Franklin Township Office of Fire Prevention dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, will comply with the comments. Met with the fire department yesterday, I think I've hit on that ad nauseam at this point as well. Uh, the County Department of Public Safety and Health dated June, uh, January thirty-first, they, there was no comments from them. Franklin Township Environmental Commission dated February seventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, they had a few comments, uh, I don't say I take exception through, exception to, but just to talk through, they had noted that their requirement is for six EV spaces on site, uh, but the requirement in state statute and reviewing it is if you have a hundred and one to a hundred and fifty parking spaces proposed on site, the requirement is for EV spaces, electric vehicle spaces. Uh, I believe they might be pulling, uh, the, the five percent requirement when you're over a hundred and fifty parking spaces, and then five percent would give you five point three six spaces, which would round up to six. So just a clarification with them, and we, I can work through that with them as well. And one other item in their letter, uh, they commented about recommending, uh, installation of porous asphalt. So, uh, with the reduction to comply with the impervious coverage requirement and bring back, bring the impervious coverage, that numbers down, and having three bioretention basins on site to satisfy the DRCC and the DEP's water quality criteria, uh, we weren't proposing porous asphalt at this time, uh, so just an, an exception from the environmental commission's report I wanted to make sure we, we put on the record.
And, and that comment, as you just mentioned, was when we had a, a variance for impervious and we didn't have all of the things you just mentioned essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, Franklin Township Police Safety Traffic Bureau Letter dated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, there was no comment in that letter to address. And then the Franklin Township Sewerage Authority Letter dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, we will comply with the comments in that letter as well. I've not spoken with the sewer department about the letter, but we intend to comply with all of their comments.
One, one minor thing on the, on the engineer's letter, just, just to be clear, even though we said we're gonna comply and that's where the comment was, but it is one that is kind of site plan related. There was a request to make the southern driveway perpendicular as opposed to its current, so if you could just confirm for the record that we'll, we will be doing that.
We will comply with that requirement as well.
Okay.
Uh, related to just outside agency approvals, I think, we, I spoke on the DEP and where that stands, DRCC, uh, had provided us a comment letter. We had a meeting with them about a month ago. Uh, a lot of their comments hinged on the location of a stream corridor, the stream corridor buffer. We've requested, we made open requests to the DRCC to get plans for the adjacent properties. Uh, so they have a, an approved plan from about ten years ago that shows the location of the stream corridor and a hundred-foot buffer for that stream corridor, uh, which is not located on our site. In fact, I think it's fifty or more feet off of our property, property line. So I'm in email correspondence with the DRCC right now to confirm that, and we intend to resubmit, uh, plans back to them to comply with their requirements otherwise, uh, shortly, probably in the next couple of weeks.
So, and, and as the chairman appropriately indicated earlier, obviously, we need to get all outside agency approvals, hoping for an approval here, so, so that's, you know, on track, I guess, essentially.
Correct. Uh, relative to the Soil Conservation District, we've received certification from Soil Conservation District, so we can submit that to the board, so as, as evidence of that. And from the county's perspective, um, they granted an exemption from this application.
And that, that's it for outside agencies, right?
Well, that was outstanding, uh, very clear, very clear, very, very nice presentation. Um, could open up to questions from the board for this witness?
They leave very little room for any questions.
I talk a lot and very fast, I apologize.
No, 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 it's good.
Lot of preparations, and that's to make it, to make it, uh, easy, and that's, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman, two questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
One, one real short, uh, maybe you addressed it, uh, no idling signs?
We will comply, yes.
Okay. And then, can you go to the, the, um, revised plan and then zoom into the rear of the building? Again, I think you touched on this, but I just wanted to bring it back up. So no, uh, to keep going the other way, so the, where the?
Where the fire lane is.
Exactly, yeah.
Where the fire lane, the rear.
So, um, and then can you scroll over a little bit so we're sure where the existing trees are, or the trees remain?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, the question is, now you're basically moving, um, with the removal of the, the twelve, um, truck parking spaces, and you've moved the, uh, emergency access drive. Can you move the basins over to the, to the right as well, and then that would move the limit of disturbance over? Because, and the reason I ask that is that's really the one area of the site where there's actually natural trees, uh, as opposed to landscape trees, et cetera. Is that possible to kind of shift the whole limit of disturbance over to the right as well?
It's something we can certainly explore, once I have the final location of the fire access lane, 'cause it is gonna shift a bit to the, to the west by about twenty-three feet from what's shown on this plan, just 'cause the fire department wants to have a forty-five-foot separation from the center line to the middle, to the rear of the building. So, once we have that location nailed down, something we could certainly explore, just to pull the basins a little bit closer to the building and limit, limit the limit of disturbance.
So, what I would suggest is, is at the end of this, again, if the board is inclined, uh, to, to approve it, I would suggest that, that there be wording to, as a, you know, for a condition that the applicant work with staff to move that limit of disturbance over to the right as much as possible.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, that saves you clearing, and it, whatever natural trees are there. Um, any?
I have a few comments.
Go ahead, Joe.
One, I understand the, the use in the area. I think from a site design standpoint, there could have been a better attempt at placing the front of the building towards the street, as opposed to giving us the side of the building. It kind of turns its side to, um, the township, and I can understand that for some of the narrow lots, uh, but I think from a design perspective, you could have used a more creative attempt to hide the truck parking in the rear somehow, as opposed to on the side. Right now, we're looking at a lot of parking and truck access, so I think there, uh, could have been some improvement, especially since you're dealing with a, a blank slate now. Um, so I'm curious, and maybe the architect will, will cover that, how, what it is we will see in terms of the side of the building, because, um, looking at this rectangle here is not that attractive. Um, with that being said, assuming that, you know, you're trying to maximize square footage, um, I think this site could benefit from a, a green wall to block the truck parking area. Um, so if you would be open to that, I think that would be a really nice improvement.
Uh, go ahead, Lauren, you go first.
So, uh, yes, the architect will demonstrate the building, kind of the aesthetic and the look of it. Uh, I could also note that we do have landscaping. Uh, there's existing trees along Davidson Avenue. We will be infilling that with additional trees and landscaping to help kind of make that look a little bit nicer from the street of Davidson Avenue. Um, and then from the, the green wall perspective, open to looking at it for sure, and can see if that's something that would be viable to maybe extend that to help kind of screen some of the, the truck docks, um, in concert with kind of how the grading works for the site and being able to have some, some more screening there.
Correct.
Yep.
Thanks.
If there is no other questions from the board, we can move on to your next one.
Okay, great, thank you. I would, uh, call Claudio Breda, please. He was the project architect.
That was a great testimony from a non-Rutgers grad, by the way.
Good evening. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
Uh, Claudio Breda, B-R-E-D-A, um, Senior Project Manager, uh, Ware Malcolm, uh, located in one-ten Edison Place in Newark.
Thank you. Um, if you can just briefly, uh, provide the board with your qualifications as, uh, an expert and licensed architect.
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the state of, um, New Jersey, as well as three other states. Graduated from Pratt Institute in, uh, New York.
And, um, we would submit he be qualified.
Accepted.
Thank you. Um, you, you heard some of the testimony in terms of the engineering. Uh, can you, focusing on the architectural aspects of things, provide the board with, uh, information regarding the floor plan, the, the architectural features, the view, the views, et cetera?
Sure. So I'll start off with the first slide, which is the overall floor plan. Um, it's a typical warehouse, uh, shown here with a typical comm spacing. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Burns noted, this is, ideally would be for one tenant, but we do show flexibility for two tenants, so we show two potential office, uh, locations on the, the south corners of the building. Uh, should, we have, uh, two tenants in the future. Um, the north, plan north, excuse me, you have your typical dock doors. In this case, we have thirty-two in total, plus two, uh, drive-in, uh, ramps, uh, on each corner of the building. Um, and again, the typical exterior constructions, uh, tilt concrete panels, and you have your typical, uh, life safety, uh, egress points throughout the exterior of, of the building. Um, the next slide is, uh, roof plan. As noted earlier, this would be solar-ready, so we just really have a very simple roof, uh, just with the high point up, uh, going down the, the middle of the building, and just slope into north and south. Um, and all the rooftop equipment or mechanical units will be pulled away from, from the edges, uh, or the boundary of the, the building, if you will, so they'll be really non-visible at the, the street level. Going down to the elevations. So, for the elevations, as I noted earlier, the exterior walls are, are tilt, uh, concrete panels, so we're proposing two tones of gray, um, with the dark color at the, at the base and the lighter tone at the top. And then we have various blues, uh, just to highlight the, the, the entries to the office spaces, which is a gradient blue going from a dark blue all the way to a lighter tone, which is typical of the IDEI Logistics branding colors. Um, then also have, we also have a branding, right? Uh, Alex? It would be easier just to show the red. So, I think over in this front, you get a, a better perspective of, of what I was describing. So again, these are concrete wall panels. We have various reveals just to break up the scale of the building, uh, so it doesn't breed, um, as big, if, if you will, for lack of a better term. Um, and then, as I noted, we have various, uh, blue highlights, uh, to ma, to describe the IDEI Logistics branding scheme. So we feel with this approach, uh, you know, with the, the various tones in colors and the various reveals, uh, we feel that, um, that we've designed the building, uh, in an attractive manner, as per section one-twelve dash thirty-three point six. Also have, uh, um, a video clip of a rendering. Which, hopefully, you get. But we could also show the, the signage, which Mr. Lomé noted earlier, but these are just some of the exhibits for the, the potential signage that will be utilized, uh, throughout the site, you know, the various regulatory signs, the park monument signs, and then you will find the signs as well as horse signs, et cetera. That's really it.
Okay. And in, in terms of, of kind of your question, in terms of you, I think that helps to give kind of the, the, and this is me, and, and obviously Alex and, and Claudio and certainly Justin, if you had anything to add, you know, gives you the sense of, of what the look is, I think. You know, what we would suggest, and Alex, if you want to speak to it, certainly, uh, looking at during the resolution compliance, bolstering up landscaping or putting some other features there as part of that to kind of en- enhance that is certainly something we would consider to, to, to kind of address your, your point.
Yeah, so you're an attorney, so I think more specificity, I want to say it. Uh, the loading dock, a green wall there, um, would be very beneficial to shield the loading area from the street. We're not talking any expensive wall. Understand the client's concern. Uh, you can be creative. We just want something that can shield the parking. Doesn't have to be a concrete wall, it's just a green wall of some sort. It wouldn't impede, uh, access at all, so I don't see, I see concern on your face, which is why.
The only, my, I only get concerned when I don't have the knowledge. So for me, I don't know what that means, so I'm looking to my professionals to fill me in. So I hear that it sounds somewhat amorphous, so I just want to make sure to, because obviously you can see from what we've done, we've, we've looked to address above and beyond your concerns, so I'm just more making sure I understand what, what it is you're, you're specifically asking, so that's my.
Yeah, well, I, I think he's already agreed to it on record, unless he wants to take back that agreement.
Yeah, I think as you go to the end of that video clip, you can really kind of see what Charles was talking about, is you pull down the street toward Davidson, um, just a little more shielding of that. Am I right?
Yeah, sort of an extension off that side of the wall.
So something to the effect of, uh, like green screening, with like some growth through there, some additional plantings in front of that as well?
Not plantings.
Yeah, just a green.
A vertical extension off of the building with green plantings.
Understood. Yes. Yeah, that's, that's certainly something we can do, and.
Architect, want to speak up? You are the most, uh, what would you add there that's consistent with what I'm asking?
I, I agree. I think a, a green wall would be a pleasant approach.
Okay, so you're the most certified person here today to speak to that?
Right, and that's, and that's, right, no, and, and certainly it's not to, it's a matter of just understanding it. And I, when I'm not, I'm quick to say I don't get it.
I know, you all are very prepared. Just want to make sure we're clear. I, I also would like to know from the architect what you could do along this side, the, the view that's facing Davidson, to add more flair, more color there. Uh, right now, it's, it's, it's not.
The grays?
No, I don't. Is there anything you can do to kind of give it a little more life there?
Certainly reconsider a different color scheme, of course.
Well, you could do your light blue, you know, toward the base, like where it's the darker gray now, that could be actually a lighter blue. Uh, that would give you some character, I think. I, I mean, I think the, with the lighter gray, because obviously if you kind of get into a.
It's nice, the gray's nice.
Yeah, I mean, if you get into something too colorful, then you know you wind up like, uh, you know, the Meadowlands thing, right, that they had to, so, you know, you don't want that.
Try to avoid it.
No. What the hell was that called again? Um, and, and I don't even remember, it was so long ago, but.
Zanadu.
Yeah, yeah, Zanadu, yeah, yeah. So, you know, you don't, you don't want those bold and brilliant colors, 'cause we do get those comments. comments, like, why do all warehouses have to be gray? But you're making them sort of light, so that they're less conspicuous.
So just to clarify, the gray is nice with the blue. Just, it's just a solid gray wall. Anything additional.
Certainly break it up further.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, and just to address your point, so this is a standard color scheme that we do for every building nationally, so we can try to address your comments, but, you know, again, you can see, it's essentially our IDI branding, similar to how you see a Prologis building with the green. My personal opinion, obviously, I like the blue color scheme, I like the gray. I've seen other developers have more of a loud orange and things like that, which, again, preferences, but we will, we'll get with our architect to try and address your comments.
Want to further clarify, I like the blue and gray.
Okay.
It's the gray wall on the side of Davidson, that.
The gray wall, okay.
Yeah, it's like, do something there.
So adding more, adding more larger blue lines, adding more, yes, that's absolutely something we can consider, absolutely.
So it's still in your branding's color scheme, right?
Yes, yes.
But it's just using it more liberally.
It's just a blank slate right now.
We can absolutely accommodate that, yes.
Just break up the rhythm, just, I think that's what we should do.
Perfect, yeah.
Break up the rhythm.
We trust the architect.
Right, exactly. So for the record, yes, the architect, we've confirmed for the record, yes, that it's staying within that color scheme, which is attractive, to break that up with some addition.
If you extend the wall, like you were talking about it, that's not going to affect the impervious coverage?
No, minimal impact to the impervious coverage, we would still stay under regardless.
Try with me if you eliminate more car parking.
I don't think actually that the wall would actually impact it at all, but understood that we've already committed to comply, so that's the case.
Sounds good. Any questions for the architect, beyond what Charles has said? Do you have any more witnesses?
The only witness I have is, was for comprehensiveness, five minutes from a planner on that one variance that we talked about. That's the only person I have left.
Yeah, we should just get that on the record as being, you know, whatever it is from a planner standpoint.
So we can do that, and we can do that in a few minutes, so.
Okay, sounds good.
And I call Leon, John Leon Cavallo, please, thank you. And we're exhibit-free, so I don't have to walk around anymore.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please, for the record.
First name is John, last name is Leon Cavallo. It's L-E-O-N-C-A-V, as in Victor, A-L-L-O. It's 388 Washington Road, Suite E, Sarajevo, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Leon Cavallo, can you, obviously, very briefly provide your qualifications to provide expert planning testimony here this evening?
Okay, I can just give my qualifications if you need them. I've testified here in the 2000s, back to 1990.
Licensed planner in state of New Jersey?
I'm a licensed planner, and my license is in good standing, and I've testified in over 300 zoning boards and planning boards, and Superior Court as a community planning expert.
I think we can accept your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Obviously, you heard the background, this is kind of to clarify for the record, but specific to the loading berth variance, can you please run through your proofs for the granting of that variance?
Sure. I'll just be quick about this. First of all, the zoning considerations, as we know, just to review, it's going to be one zone, which is business and industry district within your master plan. And your zoning ordinance, the use is conditionally permitted in the zone under the time of application rule in the municipal land use law. The project complies with all conditions, the distance from residential and water sewer availability that you talked about with the expert engineering witness. Zoning conformance, in addition to the use conformance, the project also complies with all bulk requirements through the situation with the applicant in trying to create a greater balance between what the applicant needs and what the town wants. The building height, coverage, and setbacks on all sides, and the parking fully comply, which doesn't happen all the time.
Really, the only thing we need is your statement on how you would justify the loading berth width variance.
The loading, under justifications for the relief, the loading dock length relief is justified under the flexible C balancing test. The benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriment, that's in relation to New Jersey case law. The project benefits are the project as a whole will revitalize and repurpose the underutilized land that you see there. The lot, loading dock size promotes efficient land use, promotes the efficient land use, and the larger berth is just frankly unnecessary. The loading zone size is consistent with industry standards all through the United States and the operator experience that has testified here tonight. The loading zone and all the above benefits promote purposes of the land use law, the municipal land use law, under letters A, G, I, and M, which go through a number of variety of commercial uses, promotion of visual environment, and facilitate efficient use of the land. The public detriments, the application involved with our promoted turning rate templates to demonstrate dock size is adequate, that's been done. Testimony on the record has shown that the flow, the function and the operating business and structures will be safe and efficient. Zoning relief is minimal. Relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or to the zone plan. In conclusion, the project substantially conforms with the ordinance, except for the one very minor design variance. The statutory criteria is for grant of the relief, all are met easily, and approval is respectfully warranted from this application.
Thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you. You had us at flexible, see?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the board for any witnesses before we open to the public? If seen none, I'll make a motion to open this hearing to any public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Meeting is now open to the public for any comments. Is that on?
One more second.
Might not be on. Oh, maybe it is. Okay. Sounded like it was when you tapped. Oh, maybe that's the problem, it's a battery issue. Should be green, I think.
Or, we can hear you.
No, you do, you do, because we recorded.
Thank you. If I may, I have a couple of questions, really. With regards to the LEED certification, which I think is very good news, I wanted to ask, what level of LEED certification are you going to seek? And also, if you could give, for the benefit of the public, some common examples of the type of measure, LEED-related measures that you take in your existing warehouses?
Hold up, hold up, hold up. You had to be on the mic. Okay, sorry. I will pass that along to Justin Burns, who's the applicant representative, but for the record, he testified that all of their buildings are LEED certification. They seek the highest they can, but this will be the, at a minimum, the LEED certification standard. But if you want to give a couple of examples of some of the attributes that go into.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I heard that comment in your presentation, but are you saying that your existing warehouses in New Jersey or in other parts of the country have the highest level of LEED certification?
No, we do not have the highest, we have LEED certification, so base level LEED certification for every warehouse that we're developing. Obviously, we try and pursue the highest level that we can achieve at a building. For example, this one will try and achieve LEED Silver, but we will, at a minimum, have a LEED certification. And as to the things that, it's essentially a point system, right? It's probably the most common certification for commercial buildings in general. Obviously, it's very prominent in office. Things like bike racks, things like EV charging stations, quite frankly, you know, basically doing a redevelopment where this is a vacant hotel, a Class C warehouse, doing a redevelopment versus greenfield development. These are all things that accumulate points to achieve the LEED certification.
So I'm not familiar with the first basic level. Does that include solar-ready or solar panels? Because solar-ready basically means, yeah, I have all the wirings in place, and if whoever leases the warehouse decides to install, great, but if they decide they don't care about solar energy, they can just forget about it. Solar-ready is really kind of like, eh, you know.
Sure, yeah, so every building that we're developing is solar-ready, to your point, and I can, all I can do is reference other projects and developments that have occurred for us. So as an example, we're going to be building solar on our building that we developed in Passaic, 111,000 square foot warehouse. It's not necessarily based on the tenant utilizing it, there's other agreements you can put in place. And for us, as a company, it's more about, quite frankly, getting the environmental and social governance and, you know, having that as a core value to IDI versus the monetary benefit.
So for this particular warehouse, do you plan to install some panels on the roof, or? I'm sorry, what do you plan to do with the roof? Because the roof is one of the, you know, one of the key elements in a green warehouse design. So what do you plan to do with the roof in this particular?
The roof will be solar-ready, and we plan to put solar. Obviously, we need to get contracts in place, we need to determine if a tenant is going to utilize it, but I can just say, for reference, every building that we've developed, we are installing solar.
Okay, great, thank you. With regards to the number of employees, and I don't know who is, because of course, with any warehouse, job creation is, you know, the primary goal here. So for, what is your estimate for this 200,000 square foot warehouse? What number of employees can you, do you estimate, how many do you estimate will be employed?
It's very specific to the tenant usage. We have warehouses that there's 20 employees, and we have warehouses where there are 100 employees, so it's really specific to the use of the warehouse ultimately.
So this could potentially have only 20 employees, if it's nearly fully automated? Which is my next, which is my next question.
Is it possible? Yes, right? It's absolutely possible. However, I would say the vast majority of warehouses are not automated. Our expectation is for a warehouse of this size, 200,000 square feet, this would not be an automated warehouse, it would have a standard racking system in place and would provide local jobs to the community. Generally, when you see the automated warehouses, they're the larger warehouses, the million square foot warehouses that have essentially an Amazon fulfillment center, right, with the robots kind of zooming all over the warehouse. So it's a little bit of a different animal, I would say.
So between, it could be 20, or it could be 100? So that's a pretty wide range, like in terms of the benefits to the community.
Are you essentially picking those numbers up? I mean, there's nothing.
Yeah.
You don't know your current existing warehouses? How many people they employ on the average?
It's really a tenant-specific thing, is what the answer is, but it can range dramatically depending on what kind of use they have, so. But obviously, I mean, the experience, which you mentioned a couple of times, is that this size building, particularly the local community, is something that usually is where the employees are drawn from, which is why we have the sidewalks and the other things to kind of advance that. So it's kind of hard to really have a specific answer to pin down, other than that.
Okay, and in terms of automation, what percentage of automation would you say your warehouse, this warehouse is going to have? Is it 50% automated, 10% automated?
Again, it's very tenant-specific. It's hard to answer that question. My personal opinion is that we would have very little, if any, automation within the warehouse.
Okay, but, okay, I'm just reading that the trend is towards more automation, and I'm wondering, you know, whether that's going to have an impact on the local employment, but anyway.
Sure, and again, I would just reiterate that it's generally for the larger warehouses where you see more automation.
Right, and I was going to say that it's really, and just correct me if my understanding is correct, and comment on it, that it's really related to the infrastructure improvement that a tenant has to make to do an automation, and they usually won't do that unless they have a large enough warehouse, which this isn't, in order to make that investment.
And just to hammer this point home, in our 4 million square feet in New Jersey, none of our warehouses are automated.
Okay. And my last question, I think somebody mentioned a bus shuttle with regards to, I know that Franklin Township does not provide any transportation.
There are, I think it was that there's bus routes.
Do you mean that your warehouse is going to provide a bus shuttle?
No, 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 there's existing, well, do you, Alex, you have.
Did I hear incorrectly?
No, so from what I understand, looking at the Somerset County's website, there's shuttles that go up and down Davidson Avenue. I believe it's the Dash and the Cat 1R. Yeah, I believe, they're county shuttles.
So there are existing public county shuttles that, right now, when people use them, for example, if they're coming to our site, they would have to walk in the street or on grass, so we're going to put a sidewalk, so when you get to our property, you have a dedicated sidewalk to walk.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Okay.
Hello, Jan Brandt, 22 Bryant Court, and I want to congratulate you guys that you're redoing a hotel into this, that you're not, that's super. Somebody mentioned about that you're staying away from residential property, and most of your warehouses are located away from residential property, and why is that?
All right, let's confine this to this potential, you don't have to answer that. Let's confine it to not what they do in New Jersey, but what this particular application is, okay, Jan?
Okay, thank you. How high is your warehouse? I wasn't able to find that.
Forty-five feet, one story.
One story, 45 feet. And the New Jersey, the Planning Commission put out a document in September, and the document is like on the different type of warehouses, the classifications of warehouses. Are you familiar with that document at all?
Generally, yes.
Okay, what, you know, out of the different types, they kind of put the warehouses in three categories, major distribution center, large fulfillment center, last mile fulfillment center. Would you put this warehouse in any of those categories?
I would say, again, not to dodge a question, it is tenant-specific, but my sense from the tenant that will likely occupy the building, that it would be more last mile distribution.
Okay, all right. And is the warehouse going to be air-conditioned inside?
It will, it will not be air-conditioning, no.
Okay, it won't be air-conditioned. And with a last mile fulfillment center, that's why you need the racking and all?
With a last mile distribution center, you do have racking, right? So it, again, tenant-specific, you have racking, sometimes floor stocking, but it's generally getting products inbound and then products outbound to their end destination.
Okay, and when you have to apply for that racking and all, it's after you've already gotten the warehouse approved? So you, that's like an after, you'd have to get a permit for that, right?
Yes, sorry, building permit, correct.
Right, you have to get a building permit. And your traffic impact statement, is it based on a last mile fulfillment center, or is it based on a warehouse?
Speaking high level, the land use classification is for a warehouse, I think it's land use classification 150 in the ITE guide, so that is what the traffic impacts study was based on, and based on the facility that we anticipate here, we would expect it to be in line with that land use from a traffic perspective.
Okay, and are you familiar with, you know, the 2021 IT manual, that they actually have six different categories, and they have a category for last mile fulfillment center, because it actually creates more traffic?
Again, we're, just so we're clear, I mean, you, he asked, basically answered, which category, depending on what a tenant is, so, you know, but obviously, we've got the record here with what it is, and I think it's certainly less trips than what's there, what would be there, so.
Certainly less trips than the existing uses of the hotel and the light, the light industrial use.
Right, but you have to, this is now a warehouse.
Right, so, I mean, I think the record stands for itself, I don't know what's any more saying.
Okay, and I know that, so, and I guess the question would be, if it ends up being a last mile fulfillment center, then therefore you've actually underestimated the traffic impact study, and would you be getting something, I guess if you find out your end tenant afterwards, and you see that, oh, wow, this is not a warehouse, we actually have a tenant that's, we're going to be doing a last mile fulfillment center, will you be doing a new traffic impact?
No, it doesn't, respectfully, it doesn't work that way, and in particular here, we're talking about a permitted conditional use, and not to get too far into the weeds of legal, but. but traffic in the way you're describing it is not applicable to something that's already permitted. The legislature has acted and said this is an appropriate use. So, the things you're talking about are more for like variance situations and things like that.
Okay, and, you know, I'm glad you all, you know, you stated the master plan and zoning. And actually, in the master plan and zoning, it does permit for it. And one of the things that it says in our master zoning, planning and zoning is that the site is located within the business and industry zone. The purpose of the BI zone is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a mixture of office, laboratory, hotel, data processing, and communication, light industrial manufacturing warehouse, and other compatible uses which provide opportunities for job creation by taking advantage of Franklin's centralized location. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is that we've, since 2018, we've had five point five nine five million square feet of warehouses, and there hasn't been much variety in that BI zone. And our master zone and planning kind of indicates that there should be a variety. So, you know, that's why I just bring that up. But yeah, I understand that it's a permitted zone. You mentioned, somebody mentioned about the fire truck access lane and all. How many feet did you say that had to be, twenty-four feet?
Twenty-four feet wide, yes.
Okay, and what was the forty feet, forty-five feet?
So, the forty-five feet is going to be the distance measured from the rear wall of the building to the center line of the fire access lane. So, the exhibits presented tonight don't represent that. We met with the fire department yesterday to work that out, so we will have to shift the location.
Okay, and the, so, the building is forty-five feet high. So, I imagine, I mean, that's not usually a typical warehouse. That wouldn't fall into a typical warehouse, because usually warehouses aren't forty-five feet high unless they're going to be, you know, distribution and whatnot.
It's pretty typical, forty feet or forty-five feet. And forty feet for the clear height with the interior of the building is industry standard.
Okay, and why does it have to be that high?
For the racking, for the tenants to be able to get efficiencies from the cubic.
Okay, all right. And again, if I go back to the New Jersey Planning Commission, you know, when they talk about warehouses, they talk about the square footage. And when you have a warehouse that's forty-five feet high versus the traditional, you know, regular warehouse that's just two stories high, it's almost like putting one warehouse on top of another, which that also creates more traffic in that aspect as well, according to the New Jersey State Planning Commission.
It's two hundred and, what, ten?
Two oh one.
Two oh one square feet. And you just test, you just said that it's industry standard. So, you're not building two warehouses. You're, that's simply the volume of the warehouse. It's not like you can, I mean, you said you have room for two tenants, but that would be if the building were bifurcated.
That's correct.
So, and each of those tenants would obviously be half of what it was one tenant.
Correct, yep.
I think we're good there.
Right, it just, if you read further into, now that the IT manual has the different classifications, they actually say that the warehouse, because the, having so much feet high up, it creates more materials that get, you know, transported in and out constantly. And that leads to my next question. Is your warehouse going to be open twenty-four hours a day?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so it's going to be open twenty-four hours a day?
Is that generally what every warehouse is?
That's correct. Generally speaking, you know, you have cars, or cars and trucks for that matter, on off-hours, right? Not peak traffic hours.
And they're loading overnight inside the building so that they're ready to, for the next.
Right, so it sounds like a fulfillment center, right?
That's not true.
Yeah, I thought you said it was, what did you say before it was possibly?
I said it's very tenant-specific, but I said this could certainly function as a Last Mile Distribution facility.
Okay, it could possibly, it's built, because I meant.
It will be a fulfillment center, because fulfillment centers we have in town, they're Amazon, and they're like five hundred to, five hundred thousand to like, oh, square feet.
As we said a couple of times, the size of the building is not.
It can't be that.
Correct.
Okay, and, well, according to the New Jersey Warehouse Siding Guidance, a fulfillment center can be a smaller local or area fulfillment center facility or station that primarily serves local markets, roughly the same function as retail shopping centers, having a minimum gross floor area from fifty thousand to more than one hundred and fifty thousand square feet. This category would fall into the small fulfillment center. So, it can be a fulfillment center in the local area as far as like for the grocery store or something like that, right? Okay, and how much of wetland will you be disturbing, did you say it was?
It's about twelve thousand square feet.
Okay, and is that in the corner of the property?
Southwest corner, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw. So, you can't just leave it there? You have to fill it in?
Yeah, so, from the improvements relative to the bioretention basins and some grading that we're going to be required to do. So, it really will be grading for a portion of it. So, saying that we're filling it in is a bit misleading. So, there is some grading that will still be left as landscape area. Won't be a wetland, but it will be a landscape area.
Oh, let's be clear, that's out of this board's hands. That's the New Jersey Department LOI. So, let's not, let's not.
It's solely and exclusively in the hands of the DEP they've established.
We can't control. I did mention it's isolated, correct?
It is, right. I was just going to say that, so the DEP sets up general permits where you basically can show compliance.
I'm familiar.
Yeah, so that's what, it's an isolated wetland that's going to be.
Right, and what were the recommendations that the DRCC gave you?
I don't, not having the specifics on hand right at this moment, but generally, the majority of their comments were related to a stream corridor and location of a stream corridor and a stream corridor buffer, which, as I mentioned earlier, we had made some open requests to the DRCC, got some previously approved plans for adjacent properties that note that the stream corridor buffer is not on our property. The stream corridor nor the stream corridor buffer is not on our property.
Okay, and am I allowed to address you guys or no?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Since we've been having a lot of warehouse development, I think that when, since we, these are spec warehouses, and you really don't know who the end tenant is, that maybe something should be made conditional because there are lots of different categories that are in the ITE manual that have to do with warehousing, Last Mile Fulfillment Center. And with the difference of traffic, it could be four to seven times more than the traffic that they indicate in their traffic impact study. I know that most of the warehouses go by that one fifty because it's allowable, because it's a spec warehouse. However, because we have five point five million square feet of warehouse since 2018, if everybody's going over it, we're really not going to have a safe place here in Franklin Township. So, I just want to, I know I've heard from some people in the township that the warehouses can be contingent on that traffic impact study, or maybe they have to go back and get another traffic impact study after their end user. Because, you know.
That's never the way it works, Jan. I mean, you know, I don't know, since, I know you can't sit here up here because, you know, of the conflict of interest you have. But as a planning board member, I don't know if you've taken the course yet, but you can't.
I took it.
You can't, you know, you can't do a traffic-based, you know, there's no legal method that I know of that you can, you can, you know, make people come back. I mean, we've had spec, a lot of spec buildings, not just warehouses in this township, in every township. And the way you control traffic is by zoning. And, you know, if you don't, it's like, you always use the example of gas stations, right? If you don't want four gas stations on four corners, then you make sure that your zoning says that. But once your zoning says that you are going to have four gas stations on four corners, you can't tell the gas station you're creating too much traffic because there's three other gas stations. Can't beat on.
So, perhaps, I understand you, so perhaps maybe the planning board should request from all these warehouse buildings to have the worst-case scenario of traffic. Instead of having.
But traffic is never an issue with a permitted use, just so we can all be on the same page. They, whatever their traffic study said, it wouldn't matter because warehouses are permitted use provided they meet the conditions. They meet the conditions, therefore the township has already anticipated their traffic. So, the traffic study they provide is really immaterial to the board's consideration of the application because the traffic is never going to be a reason. The board can deny their use.
So, why is a traffic impact study done?
To demonstrate what type of traffic is anticipated. Usually municipalities want to see what's going to happen. Sometimes they'll do what they can to try to anticipate that traffic and take it into consideration, perhaps with how they engineer access to and from a site. But generally, it's not a reason they can deny the application.
Okay, and maybe you misunderstood my purpose of asking for this. Maybe the township should consider having the, since it doesn't make a difference, I'm not saying to turn this warehouse down. I actually compliment you all for making this hotel, dilapidated hotel into a warehouse. I'm not trying to stop it. But maybe the township needs to have built, since we're not going to be stopping it, but you're making it look like this pretty picture that we're hardly going to have any traffic. And maybe you need to have the real picture of what the traffic's going to be like. Why have it based on an inaccurate, you know, setting? And if you go read the New Jersey Siding Guidance, you'll see that it shouldn't be wait, it shouldn't be based on the one fifty warehouse, and that's what everybody does. So, maybe we need a more realistic picture here.
No, I get, I get what you're asking. You know, like Pete said, legally, there's not much we can do about it. But I understand, and I think part of the problem is when they come in as spec, you really don't know. But what you do know, at least, is, and we have Amazon fulfillment centers in town, is we know it can't be that. And you've done ITE, you've provided IT estimates to the best of, to the best of your ability. The other reason that this concerns me less than if it were cited elsewhere is because you almost couldn't have better egress and access to two eighty-seven than where you are. You will not be going through residential neighborhoods. You will be having an, almost your own on-ramp to two eighty-seven. And that's one of the main reasons, other than the adaptive reuse of the hotel site, not using Greenfield, that I, I think this is almost a textbook case of where a warehouse should be.
The one thing I would add in support of this statement, but still in respect to the legal nature of the traffic study and its impact on our decision, is that ITE looks at national standards. We now have a situation locally where we have enough warehouses where we can use them as the reference to determine traffic versus the national standards. So, I think there is some validity in what you're seeing moving forward. Now that we have the case study present here locally, the conversation nationally is leaning more towards having your local data make the case for you versus the national average from an ITE standpoint. So, that is a valid comment in that context, but we're not there yet.
It's almost like planning for a party. You know, you're not going to plan for, oh, you know, if you're having ten people and you're not sure. You really need to plan for everything that possibly could happen.
You don't want to have to run to the store again. No, I totally, I totally get where you're going, Jan. I just, you know, I'm trying to think of, you know, maybe that is a solution that Charles just said, is that we can use some local data, then we have it. But in this case, and given this size warehouse, I'm comfortable that there is no possibility for it to be, you know, an Amazon fulfillment center. And I like the sighting. I think, I think though, in the future, you make a good point. And I think we, something we should consider in terms of trying to get local data. And it wouldn't be inconsistent when somebody comes for, you know, a hardship variance in a neighborhood, and they're trying to demonstrate that, you know, all the lots in the neighborhood are ten thousand square feet. And where, it would be really kind of almost, to me, the same sort of principle. But in this case, you went by the IT manual for your best estimate. You know, if you were telling me, well, the warehouse could be, you know, two hundred thousand square feet or five hundred thousand square feet, we'd have a different conversation.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Alex Strauss, two eighty-five Haslett Way, Somerset. I just want to confirm something first, the board and the team, Mr. Conchatori and the team. This is the first time that this application is being heard? This is preliminary and final, is that correct, you know, in public?
Yes.
Okay, and I wanted to refer to something in your, in the application. It says all structures on both properties are proposed to be demolished, is that, that's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it says are proposed to be. Right now, the Holiday Inn is being demolished. So, you know, this doesn't exactly fit in with what you're saying here, proposed to be.
What we're saying is it's proposed to be demolished and replaced with the, with the new warehouse. A demolition permit is not contingent on zoning. So, if, for example, if someone wanted to demolish a building and leave it vacant, they can, so that's why. So, it's proposed to remove these structures and replace it, you have to go with the rest of the sentence.
I see.
But a demolition permit does not require zoning approval.
Right, so you spent, you guys spent like forty-two million, so you want to get going, right? Okay.
Well, I don't think the, well, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, okay, yeah. In regards to traffic, I have a concern. It said that the northern driveway will be used for heavy, heavy traffic, like trucks, right? And isn't that, is that not more conflicting perhaps with Atrium Drive? And they have to make left turns onto Davidson to head to two eighty-seven. So, does that possibly conflict more with the Atrium Drive traffic coming out of Atrium Drive? Okay.
I mean, the record is there, no?
Yeah, no, okay. This is a two-lane road, and so Franklin is specializes in two-lane roads, except for a couple of county roads. How about making the right turn? How far over to the left? Trucks always do this. They go far over to the left of the lane in order to make the right. Will the entrances be wide enough so they won't have to go so far over to the left and confuse motorists? Maybe they'll even start passing on the right, you know? So, are the entrances going to be widened from what they are now?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah, appropriate for trucks to make turns into and out of the property. And typically for this site, we would expect trucks to be coming from the north, making rights in as two eighty-seven is to the north of the site.
Right, okay. And are you aware, I guess it says right there what the speed limit is? You know what the speed limit is, right, on Davidson Avenue?
Yes.
All right, we can.
Okay, okay, okay. So, now, are you aware that there's a senior development at the end of the road?
Okay, they're aware of the conditions, but let's not.
Can I just address the board then? Can I address the board?
Sure.
Okay, there is Somerset Run at the end of Davidson Avenue. And of course, it's a speed limit of forty-five, and seniors using that road.
They should never ever be down there. I mean, they would have no reason to go down there. You've got access to two eighty-seven right there, getting on and getting off. You don't need to go down to Somerset Run at all.
Well, I'm talking about.
Somerset Run is probably more impacted by traffic from the shop right, right now, than anything that this warehouse would do.
I'm talking about people from Somerset Run have to use, will use Davidson Avenue.
Well, you could say, everybody in Franklin at some point in time uses Davidson Avenue. You're reaching, so let's, is there a point to this application?
Yes, traffic safety.
Okay, which we addressed. Is there anything more to add beyond the considerable amount of traffic we've already heard?
Okay, well, we're going down really a rabbit hole because a warehouse is replacing a hotel.
Maybe not for the same reasons you would.
On the other, on the other side of Doubletree is another hotel going up, and then the proposal for another warehouse next to it. So, here we go again, you know. We couldn't make this Holiday Inn because we, last, because, because we have overbuilding on hotels. So, hopefully, this is not overbuilding on warehouses, right? But that's the way it may be coming, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Do you know whether there are members of the public coming forward and move to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any thing you want to say in summation?
No, I think the record stands for itself, and we'll rest.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion, if anybody wants to make one.
I'll move to approve the application subject to all the points brought out in the discussions. I believe there was one item that was left to be discussed with staff. Mark, what was?
That was the disturbance in the rear of the site to see if they can move that over.
over.
Okay.
Move it forward on the site.
Other than that, subject of all the discussions, points brought up in the discussion.
And can you add to your motion, the variance?
Yeah, I think the variance, I move to grant the variance also, I also think maybe we should move to look at that in the municipal land use law.
We've gotten it a lot of times, anything else we should include? Oh, yeah, that's part of the testimony, but let's call that out specifically, the green wall, because that wasn't part of the plan that they.
Meanwhile, but it was one of the items that was under discussion and agreed to, the attorney does a great job of listing all the specific things in the resolution.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to basically reiterate what Bob just said, which is, the applicant made a number of promises, if you will, that they're going to incorporate, I take notes as the board knows, I take notes, the attorney takes notes, they're reflected in the minutes, they all get reflected in the resolution, regardless of whether you specifically state them right now.
Right, thanks, Mark, so that's your motion, I will second, and Christine, pull the board.
Erica Inssensio?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
I want to say yes, but I also want to say yes, by commending the public, by commending the applicant, and the experts that were here tonight, I think is one of the better testimonies I've seen on both sides, I thought it was done respectfully, I think if we can continue that, we can make Franklin a better place, so yes.
Thank you.
Robert Thomas?
Yes, and I want to echo, I think it was a terrific presentation, I wish we would have more like that at all the meetings.
Thank you.
Good.
It's a lot of work and it's good, it's a good, it's mutually beneficial, really, so, thank you.
Yeah, but you're here once and done.
Well, maybe not, maybe I'll be back.
Rebecca Hilbert?
I'll say yes, and I also want to thank you and the public for speaking to what you think the town should be, I'm sure we're not the only town facing this issue, and, you know, it really does help to have citizens that care, and we'll have to just figure it out together as we go, so, yes.
Michael Arcini?
Yes, and I just, again, I want to, there's not much more I could add beyond the eloquence of Charles here, but I do want to say that I'm glad these planning board meetings are taped, if I, Mark, and I could tell this to Vince as well, and the staff, they should show this tape to everybody who's coming into a warehouse, I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, it's nice technically to see the video, I doubt that's hard, that's not, it's tech, it's not high-tech, right, everybody could do it, I think, but I mean, it just, it just made the architecture testimony, just call out one thing, but, you know, the overall preparation, I think this is probably, not just warehouse, but probably one of the best well-presented applications I've heard in quite some time, and truthfully, you don't, you don't have to go away, we can preserve this performance and make it required viewing for anybody who comes in for a warehouse, I really truly mean that, so, yes, yes, for me.
And on behalf of the entire team, it takes a lot of work, and we appreciate that, we know you do a very, very difficult job, and there's a lot of divergent interests, and it's about doing the right thing, that's really what this client is about, and so we take that to heart, and thank you for the comments.
I believe that completes our agenda for this evening, and we show, no, there's nothing, no, and so we will see you again.